I'd like to call this meeting to order. Okay, I see the first thing on the agenda is a proposed resolution number one is a resolution approving inter municipal agreement with the village of Waterville for demolition services. Anybody like to speak about this?
They contacted us to do demolition. We've helped them in the past under the same type of agreement. This year, we have new contracts out. They cover all of our expenses, all our tipping fees, all our people, and give us 20% over and above to help with our operations and our payments of our things.
Oh, great.
Now, we have a revenue line for DPW.
Good. Any other, any other questions? Matt, I'd like to close in. Go on to the next proposed resolution.
We're gonna put this in committee.
You want to put this in committee?
Yeah.
Put it in, Marcus?
Yeah.
And we should make it full council?
Well, in committee.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll second it, committee.
We'll do that at regular meetings.
And then go on to the next proposed, proposed orderance number three, authorizing the sale and disposal of surplus city equipment. Mr. Short, would you like to?
We'd like to purchase what's called the skid steer. Most people refer to it as bobcat. List price sign is $110,000. On New York State contract, it gets reduced down to $135, and then with some other discounts. We'd like to trade in some equipment that is not being used up at the parks garage for the additional markdown of what we're gonna pay for it. So for a $110,000 piece of equipment, we can get it for $28,000.
After we trade these other things?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with this.
No, no.
Dave, I have a question. Do we already have a buyer for everything?
It all, it all goes back to the vendor, who's a state contract vendor, and then they're, I guess they're gonna resell it.
But they agreed on every, all the equipment already?
Yes, yes. Yeah, they're...
They agreed on the price? Oh, that's...
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close this and we'll go on to proposed resolution number four. It's a resolution to approve and endorse Flavoured Layers LLC 2025 New York Main Street application.
I'll just briefly introduce these next few. It's CFA time, which is the state's consolidated funding application, which are due at the end of July. And you'll see here, there's a few resolutions that are required to go with those applications. Chris Lawrence, Deputy Commissioner of U. Urban and Economic Development, is here and can give you the details on each of the individual applications. But most of them are tied, this is not one of those, but a number of them are tied to the Brownfield Opportunity Area, the BOA, which the city got approved early last year and designated by the state. So that makes us eligible for a variety of funding grants.
But what's Flavoured Layers?
Flavoured Layers is the name of an LLC of a couple who purchased a slew of housing on Mandeville Street.
A slew?
They started off with a building at the corner of Mandeville and State Street. They're planning to redevelop the property as well as that northern side of Mandeville Street into a, into an anchor of the Arts District. It'll have gallery space, office space, common area.
It's one building?
So they're beginning with the first building, and they have plans to expand down the street. But for this specific grant, they're focusing on the one building.
So they're asking for $500,000?
Correct. And they're, they're asking the common council to endorse. We don't have any, we don't have any committed funding.
You seen the plans and everything?
Yes.
And do they have monies to complete it and not leave it halfway done?
Yes. It'll be a great addition to the neighborhood.
That's my only concern, is that, you know, they start a project, and then they won't have the funds to finish it. So you've already checked into that, their funds, to make sure?
Yes, they're legitimate.
I'm not saying that they aren't. These are concerns as a councilman that we've had over the years, where they've started buildings and they haven't been completed. So I just think that, you know, thorough investigation to make sure they can, they can do this.
It's very interesting.
And you feel confident of it?
Absolutely.
So there's no match from the city or anything? It's just they're doing it?
Correct. This is just an endorsement.
Okay. And that'd be for four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, 10? 10, 11? The last one would be 13? No? No, 11.
Can you look through these? I mean, is there somebody who's actually interested in each one of these that we're looking at?
Yes.
This ain't a power, is it?
No. God, no.
So, okay, so I just wanna, you know...
Where do you want to start? On five?
Yeah, just, 'cause we're gonna, you know, if you're looking for us to, you know, to vote on these, sort of look at the idea.
Yep. So five is a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State BOA predevelopment application for the Barnes Ave neighborhood. This is to fund a neighborhood plan that would include community engagement and design and construction documents for Barnes Ave neighborhood bounded by Platt Street to the west, Skyler Street to the east, Ariskene Street to the west, or west to the south, and the CSX rail line to the north. When CSX takes down the bridge, the Barnes Ave Bridge, we want to make sure that that's an opportunity to reconnect that neighborhood that often gets neglected. You know, there's, there's a lot of potential there, and we don't want to leave that with just, you know, a demolished bridge and maybe the approach that leads to nowhere. We don't want this to be a scar in the neighborhood. So we want to work with the neighbors to, to just strengthen and stabilize.
Well, it probably is the most, the neighborhood that nobody even looks at. I mean, it's over there on the other side of Ariskene Street. Nobody really pays attention to it. What, tearing down the bridge is gonna make a difference. Because the bridge is at the end of the neighborhood. It has nothing to do with the neighborhood over there.
It, it actually runs right through the neighborhood.
Right, well...
It's, it's directly in the middle of that neighborhood.
And I'm not saying I'm against this, but I mean, have you gotten together with the neighbors there? Have you spoken to them?
That would be, that would be a part of this.
This, this is a planning, this grant.
Okay, so you're gonna get the grant, and then you're gonna work with the neighborhoods there.
They very much want the bridge down as well. It's talked about a lot, if I can. But yeah, that bridge, if anything, though, it's nice to, we usually get our bikes on there to go through the Empire Trail.
Sure.
So if we can ever start to think ahead of how we can make that an access point or route it down farther, it'd be great.
Correct.
And the bridge just goes over the tracks, right?
Yeah, but that...
But the tracks are controlled by CSX.
Right, yeah.
Let me ask you this question. Going into that area, like she's talking about, that bridge, I think it's probably good to be taken down because I would bet there's a lot of the, a lot of light and a lot of homeless, and you give her a lot of credit if she drives down there by herself over that bridge.
Speaking of that, Nick, did, did they ever put up that street light that they ordered? There was a street light there. They were supposed to put over there.
The end of Hess, and yeah, with a stop sign.
Yep.
That it's been put up?
The street light wasn't. The stop sign went up right away.
It was a little street light, right?
The light, I'd have to check into with...
'Cause we spoke about that about a month ago.
Or did we fix the light?
The light has, was completely taken out. The stop sign and the street sign went up right away. I don't know if it was a national grid thing or where we left off on that. But that's a concern, 'cause it is, like, speaking of, like, the bridge, it's really dark over there.
That's a big concern with the residents there. 'Cause they only have the light on that street there.
It's just a stub where it used to be.
I'll get you an answer. Thank you. All right.
Number six?
Number six is a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State BOA predevelopment application for Broad Street. So you'll see a trend here with the BOA. Like Brian said, the Brownfield Opportunity Area, it's the central industrial corridor that runs basically the length of the city from the Yorkville line to the Frankfurt line, including a portion of the harbor area. Well, it's labeled the harbor area, but it's really not. It's North Utica, Wurz Ave, Leland Ave area. We're taking the recommendations from that BOA that we planned, we paid for, and we're trying to implement those with the funds from the CFA. So this specific legislation is for Broad Street. This is, again, design and construction documents and renderings for infill development and adaptive reuse, along with streetscape improvements and pedestrian improvements. This is just design and construction documents. It's not actually the design and construction of these things at the moment. So this is more planning.
You're gonna come up with a drawing? Is that what the intention of this, to come up with a drawing, what it's gonna look like?
Yep. There'll be the construction documents, and then some renderings for potential infill development and adaptive reuse.
It has nothing to do with the road itself, though, right?
Well...
The road laws and the road...
It, it will, yeah, it will, in, in, in a sense. It will propose streetscape improvements and pedestrian improvements along that corridor.
The road's a mess.
The tap grant's gonna handle most of the road, but there's a match to our grant. And this is how we're gonna help bridge that gap with this.
But we're just hopefully trying to get you okay to try and get this funded.
Correct.
That's what we're doing right now?
Correct.
We're not passing, just trying to get through the...
Yes, yes. In order, in order to submit the, actually submit the application for the funding, we need your blessing. That's all we're asking for.
All right, not much to talk about until you get it.
Correct. I don't disagree with that.
I don't mean to cut you off, Jack. No, but it's important we talk about it. Once they get it, we'll talk. So we all understand what, what's going on.
Everybody's okay. Number seven is a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State BOA predevelopment application for the former Howard Johnson site in Leland Ave parcel. So what we're doing here is, you're all familiar with the Howard Johnson site. It's been vacant, undeveloped for many years. Right now, it's really difficult to get into the site. There's very limited ingress and egress right next to the motel there and the throughway on ramp. They're gonna take a look at that with the exit 31 study. But for now, we're looking at a parcel that the city owns off of Leland Ave. It's pretty steep. It's got a interesting, you know, grade change. We want to see if we can plan, you know, draw plans for maybe a switchback road that would act as an entrance and exit.
To the site, off of Leland?
Off of Leland, so that we could open that up to development.
Well, is, is that where the trailers were all parked? Is that, is that right there? We don't own that land, though, right?
We don't own that land, but it's been available for many years. It's a 19-acre piece of land.
It's one of the largest developable sites in the city of Utica at this point.
In a pretty desirable area, but, but there's just limited access to that. So we're, we're trying to make, do what we can to make these developable sites more desirable to developers.
More limited access to come because now the state has a new rule that you can't have a private driveway 100 feet.
Correct.
State off-ramp. So by implementing this, now there will be access to that space if they end up closing that.
We don't have any plans of purchasing it, do we?
We, we don't.
Okay. It's just to fix it up so he, the owner could redevelop?
How about he puts something nice there?
Well, it's, yes.
Then it'll be taxes, taxes for us.
Would the other, would the other property?
It could help with redevelopment.
The other property that is currently owned by the personal owner, okay? Would he be able to access his property from the road that we want to put in also? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, well, yes. That's, that's the point of this exercise.
So his property plus the 19 acres that are ours?
No, so we, so there's two, there's only two parcels on this site. There's the 19-acre parcel.
That's ours.
No. And then there's our parcel at the end at Leland Ave. Our, our parcel will act as the entrance to this parcel. So we want to design a road. I mean, when I say a road, it's, it's more of a driveway. It just means an ingress and egress.
Hey, will you address the owner on this at all, what he's looking to do?
We haven't at this point, but we certainly will.
Well, he's definitely gonna be happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's gonna be real happy. He's gonna be able to unload it enough.
What, well, he'll be happy to unload it, but we'll all be happy that something desirable is developed there.
Guess what? He might not want it, but he might want it solid.
Something with it, yeah.
Okay, next.
Eight is a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State BOA predevelopment application for the Nexus Corridor. This is looking to fund remedial investigations, environmental site assessments, and a remedial analysis work plan for sites found in Bag Square West. Specifically, we're talking about the blocks founded by Broadway to Hotel Street between Ariskene Street and White's Road. You've got a site that has seen great development over the last, you know, 10 years, especially with the opening of the Nexus Center. We're helping to ready this site for the developers that own most of the parcels. They're looking to work together and work with us to create a neighborhood that will be an infill, that will offer hotels, restaurants, family activities, you know, maybe additional, you know, medical, something to play off the hospital, but more housing. And it's just, it's a great opportunity area. You've got a lot of families that are walking from, and in teams that are walking from most of our lodging, which is located on North Genesee Street, over the bridge, and there's a huge void from Hotel Street to Broadway.
Is this some of the area where the Masonic home wanted to build?
Uh, no. Nope. That was the old Horks, it was inside at 26, 28 White's Road Street. This is the blocks of Seneca and Washington and Seneca and, or, sorry, Broadway and Seneca and Seneca, Washington.
Is that still going on, the Masonic home sale?
As well as half of Hotel Street.
Is the Masonic home sale still, are they still negotiating, or?
They have a long-term, they have a, I believe it was a three-year option that was approved maybe two years ago.
Okay, so they're still using their option there?
Do they have a different location, too, that we're looking at?
Not at this time. Not that I'm aware of. Nine is a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State BOA predevelopment application for the former Mealy Manufacturing Site and the Ariskene Street West Corridor. This is another one that is probably familiar to most of you. The Mealy site is on the opposite end of Ariskene Street West. It's between the U-Haul, well, the Salerno's Auto Property and the Dollar General. We are looking to submit an application to prepare the Brownfield Cleanup Program documents for New York State DEC, as well as a traffic study, master streetscaping plan, and design standards for Ariskene Street West. We've been looking to do this for a number of years now. We're looking to change the complexion of the entrance into Utica from the Yorkville line. We'd like to make this more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. We'd like some streetscaping of some sort, any sort. It's really devoid of trees and landscaping at this point in time. And we'd like to have design standards to, hopefully in the future, you know, make that a corridor that has more rear parking instead of front yard parking. So again, it's more attractive to residents and to developers. And most importantly, I think, is the Mealy Manufacturing Site is a huge opportunity. This is 5.4 acres of developable land.
Owned by the city.
Owned by the city, that we would like to not own and have back on the tax rolls. And there's not many people willing to get into the site if we can't clean it up and identify what's there. Reconnection of the grid system in Bag Square West. We would like to reestablish Water Street, reconstruct it. Right now, Water Street ends behind PJ Green. We'd like to extend it by the old Carlo Massey Building in Division Street so we can connect Bag Square East and West under the bridge. We'd also like to realign Hotel Street. So right now, Hotel Street, there's a right-of-way next to PJ Green that's old cobblestone. So right now, Hotel Street, there's a right of way next to PJ Green that's old cobblestone. This would align it with the existing path of Hotel Street so that it will connect to the new realigned Water Street and make it a little bit more of a traditional neighborhood, more connected, and more desirable to redevelop. This would also include a pedestrian walkway on the cobblestone that exists next to PJ Green, next to the realigned street, as well as improvements along Bouchard Lane that runs behind the Lower Genesee Street Buildings and Hotel Street Buildings.
I got a question. I noticed that you're in all these areas here, but you didn't really include any of the areas where Charlestown is. Are we trying to get any money for that to clean that area up at all? I know we don't own it, but I mean, what's, are we doing anything or is that a county issue?
Very little of the Charlestown complex lies within the city of Utica boundaries. We basically have the front door and everything else is...
We got the huge parking lot over there, right? Which even makes it easier for us to fix up, right?
But I don't...
I wouldn't get, there's a huge parking lot in front of Charlestown, right?
That's privately owned.
Yeah, are we working with them at all to redevelop it or? I mean, everything here is owned by somebody else.
It is, but there's the difference between that site and these that we're preparing. There are developers for these sites that are actively looking at redevelopment. The owner of the parking lot, they haven't, they haven't proposed any redevelopment for that yet.
Have you approached them at all?
We have not at this time, but we only have so much, you know. We only have so much we can do at this point.
I'm not throwing spears, I'm just wondering.
We've got nine applications in a year.
If they came forward with a development plan, we'd certainly be willing to work with them.
It's all Frankfurt, though. Well, the building is, we did all that huge area. It actually would be easier for us to develop it than tearing that building down. It's just, it's serious brownfield there.
Well, we have the C S O separations happening by the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's all of our stormwater combines or outflows.
Right, you're putting it in over there.
So all that separation, that's in that, that's docketed for our next eight point two, six point two, I would say before that, before any development happens. That's, it's already docketed to be happening. So there is gonna be movement over there of some sort.
Well, we're gonna fix the sewers.
Fixing the sewers, which is a huge...
Right, but there's nothing there.
The guy that owns that parking lot, Jack, I think, I believe it's Gaylord Gaydon still, right?
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
That guy is never gonna try to get rid of it. He's gonna hold to the people in Frankfurt, they develop that.
Sure.
And the lot will be worth a lot more than he can get rid of.
He's not gonna do it anymore now.
He could do it, you know what I'm saying?
It'll be long gone before they break that.
Well, I'm just saying.
But you're gonna do it now, nobody's gonna buy it with that. It's a huge empty space. Anyways.
With all due respect, we are not talking about that at all. We're just here to talk about the application for Bag Square West.
Yeah, I know, and we can talk about what we want to.
And honestly, what Chris described, that's included in this, was in the D R I. It was not successful, but which the mayor stated afterwards that he would still find ways to implement what was in the D R I. So we're using this as an opportunity to just to move that forward.
A quick question, the city's applications, is there, is this handled in-house? The Brownfield related applications? Or is it something that outside council will come in for Brownfield tax credits, anything like that?
Uh, no, at this point, this is in-house.
Good question, right?
That is all I have for now. I have to check to see what's missing from this.
Oh, very good. I have a question. There was a project over on Whitesboro and Saratoga Street. And it was supposed to be like the finish line?
The Tappawal Project?
Yes.
They did not receive funding in the last allocation of low-income housing tax credits. So they are, it's a very competitive process. There were a number of projects that were awarded tax credits in that round within the Mohawk Valley. So they are still intending to try and move that project forward and are in the process of submitting applications for funding for that project.
Thank you. And there's another one on, I believe it's Gray Ave and Capital. There is gonna be five houses built?
Uh, yeah, that sale was approved by the Urban Renewal Agency several years ago.
Right.
The developer at this point has not moved forward. It's probably worth discussing with the agency whether they wanna revert that property back to the city.
Okay, very good. I figured you were here, I figured that those two things were to... Thank you. Any other questions? If not?
And I'm sorry, I will work with Melissa to get this into the packet within the next couple of minutes. But there was also a grant application for a revised City of Utica citywide master plan. Did, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was in the back.
You can see it in the back.
Okay.
It was in my bag. It's my resolution number ten.
Can I see that? Oh, my?
It's ten.
Yeah, mine was, hmm, I'm sorry. Yep, can I see that? Okay, yes. And I'm sorry, number ten was a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State Smart Growth application for an updated citywide master plan. Yes, yep. Thank you, sorry. Sorry, you triggered my...
Brian, just give me my stuff back the way I gave it to you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to proposed resolution number twelve. Authorization sale of beer and wine to Valley View Golf Course. There's a whole slew of dates said Friday, July eighteenth, seven AM to seven PM. Monday, July twenty-first, seven AM to seven PM. Saturday, July twenty-sixth, seven AM, seven PM. Saturday, August second, seven AM, seven PM. August third, seven AM, seven PM. Saturday, August sixteenth, seven AM, seven PM. Friday, August twenty-second, seven AM, seven PM. Friday, September fifth, seven AM, seven PM. And Saturday, August twentieth, seven AM to seven PM at the Valley View Golf Course.
I think we have to amend Saturday, August twentieth to say September. Because August twentieth is a Wednesday.
Okay.
I don't know. Maybe we can check on that before.
So that should be September twentieth?
Yeah, September twentieth.
We gotta make a change to that.
Oh, amend that for tonight's meeting.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close this and go on to proposed resolution number thirteen. It's a resolution to approve and endorse the city's Department of State and local waterfront revisit... I'm sorry. Waterfront.
Yeah, don't turn it down, Bob, it's perfect like that.
Yeah, well, I turn it, I get thirty spam calls a day, I don't know why.
Turn it off.
You know, I will.
Glad you didn't stop signing up to those websites.
Yeah.
Got 'em all red.
Yeah. Any, any questions about this? If not, we'll go on to the next resolution number fourteen. It's the authorization of sale of beer and wine to Greater Utica Chamber of Commerce, Greater Utica Chamber of Commerce Five Points Pub. It's for happy hour Thursday, July twenty-fourth, three PM to nine PM, six hundred block of Huntington Avenue at the Five Points, six twenty-three, Columbia Street. Any questions? We'll close that, go on to the next one, proposed resolution number fifteen. It's another authorization of sale of beer and wine to the Dinghy Bar Boiler Maker Celebration. Dinghy Bar on the corner of Sunset and Lincoln. Sunday, July thirteenth, eleven AM to five PM, seven twenty-eighth, Land Street, Utica New York.
Anybody that's got chips can't use them that day, Beatrice.
I don't have one. Guess what?
I'll buy your...
I don't have one chip.
If there's no questions, we can close this one, go on to proposed resolution number sixteen. It's a housing blanket where the state of New York has made a hundred million dollars in funding.
Mr. Chairman, regarding number sixteen.
Go ahead.
As most of you know, and I don't think, I don't know if this...
I think it's worried.
As most of you know, mad apartments, Adrian Terrace and all that's coming down. All the people who live in southeast Utica where Mr. Carcone is the councilman, they're very concerned because, as you know, Washington courts was torn down for the reason at that time, because I was here, that they said that they wanted no more warehouse type housing, where people warehoused.
What are you talking about?
So, I'm talking about Washington courts. Now, that's, now, what you have at Adrian Terrace and Mad Apartments, been there, Adrian Terrace has been, I was in high school when I was there. But it's, that's all coming down. And there has been very little talk about the funding and what is going to be developed along that corridor. And the people who live along the Parkway, of which I am one, and my neighbors who I've talked to, and Mr. Calley. I wanted to know, number one, if this has anything to do with that. And if it doesn't, I still want to make it aware that at some point, the common council should invite Mr. Calley here to tell us what he has in mind for the Culver Ave area. That is, that is business of the councilmen, and in particular, my councilman, Mr. Carcone. And I'm sure he is aware of all that. And I'm sure that he is, has that on his agenda. And I, but I, when I see this amount of money, and it says for pro-housing supply funds program to towns and cities, et cetera, to assist communities in addressing infrastructure issues that hamper development of much-needed housing. And my question was, does this have anything to do with that? And if not, what does it have to do with?
So I can address that. The state, Governor Hochul has an emphasis on providing more housing across the state and has established a pro-housing supply infrastructure program that provides grants to cities, towns, and villages to basically construct the infrastructure, though it does include demolition as well, that will result in the creation of new housing units. The application is due at the end of July. I have been approached by one developer, that is, Mr. Calley, who is interested in the full ten million dollars that is the maximum award for what they call their Parkway Gardens project, which will replace, as the judge mentioned, Adrian Terrace, F X Matt, and... Andy Peters, thank you. They call it Park, they call the project Parkway Gardens, but it's the replacement, as the judge mentioned, of Andy Peters, Adrian Terrace.
You're saying area?
Yes. Yes.
It's just all...
Yes.
This has got nothing to do with what's going on in the Parkway Drive.
No.
No, no.
No.
This is separate.
There may be, there's other developers that may have an interest. So the way I've written this resolution is, it authorizes the common council president to sign a letter for any applications for housing projects that comply with existing zoning. Because we don't have specific details on what projects that might be. The grant program, as opposed to the others that we talked about previously, where they, the grant program requires an actual resolution from this body, the pro-housing infrastructure supply program only requires a letter of support from this body. So that's what this resolution does, is authorizes the common council president to sign a letter of support to go with the application. Again, right now, the only application that I, the only developer that's approached me with a definitive plan is Mr. Calley for the Parkway Gardens project. But the program limits it, limits awards to no more than two per community. So there are multiple applications that can be filed.
Now, that Washington courts project, from what I understand, they're gonna just do one phase at a time, right?
The Parkway Gardens?
Housing for those people?
The Parkway Gardens project, yes. It's phased.
I mean, Adrian Terrace.
Yes.
Trying to look what they did over there on Bleacher Street, right? They reworked the asphalt and they're rebuilding it?
Well, so these, these would be three to four-story, like newer construction buildings where everything is on one level. Right now, you have most of those units that are, you know, they're up and down. These are all ADA compliant and will have elevators. And I think you'll end up with a similar amount of apartments.
Sometimes they gotta find, you're gonna do one phase at a time and find housing for the people that are moved out of those...
Correct. They'll need to relocate the existing residents because they're demolishing all the buildings on those sites.
And not to jump to the subject, oh, I want to, right?
No, again, it's phased.
Okay. Not to jump to the subject, but apartments going behind Parkway Drugs are fifty-five and older and...
And those are market rate, they're not low-income housing.
Right. And that's right in the deep, right? I heard it was.
Well, it's, it's, that I don't, I don't know the specifics of that, but it's different funding sources.
It's all municipal housing?
Well, they're the developer, yes. But behind Parkway Drugs isn't...
That's not section.
It's not municipal housing. It's not MHA, it's not municipal housing.
Quick question with this resolution, is there any citation for the quoted material in provisional law where this comes from?
It's in the budget, I guess.
I mean, just the quoted material in reference to the council president signing any letters of support, is there?
That comes off the website for the current program.
Okay, so it's, I gotcha, okay.
Any other questions? If not, there's two pieces in committee that were placed in committee because of U P D.
It's for the, did you have any comments on the alleyway events people are trying to host in July and August? I know that they put it in committee, but I don't know if you could get an answer for them.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with...
One's for Franklin Square Alley and the other's for the Liberty Bell Park. And of course, they'll be over to summer.
They were first requested in May and June, so...
And we won't have another meeting before these events.
Well, I think, not to interrupt, I think Deputy Chief Moonin say that they might not even go with the alcohol there.
I don't know.
Is it for alcohol, it's for alcohol consumption?
Yeah, and I think he said they might be changing their plan or, last time, he was gonna look into it. So that's what they're saying.
They were supposed to, so it was a permit. And the park, the people wanted to throw some kind of party, barbecue.
Can I see it, if I can see that?
Yeah. And Deputy Chief was concerned about the hours, how long it went on and how late it went on. And he wanted to try to work with them to get a permit that's more conducive to the police resources.
Did they say that they didn't realize how much was involved in it? They might go in a different direction?
Well, that's what he said, he was gonna approach him, them to talk about and modify their application.
Yeah.
Because it's something like twelve-hour coverage till like two in the morning.
It was a liquor license, too. Yeah, well, that's, my first question would be, who has a liquor license? And you're gonna get the extension of premise to have alcohol.
All those things, yeah. So, police were supposed to answer all those questions before the permits came in. The rec probably wouldn't tell you how to do, but just, just getting an update from Deputy Chief Noonan, if the council has to pass it in the special meeting, that's what they gotta do?
Let me see if I can get...
Yeah.
If I can get a few minutes, let's see if I can get an answer.
That'd be great.
Well, you, I don't even think you need them, well...
Ideally, we do get to know it tonight, so we don't have to have a special meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Let me step on it.
Yeah. Sorry.
But yeah, it wouldn't be till the end of the meeting when we vote.
Don't be telling us what we're...
Ah, you're right, Jack, that was overstepping my stuff right there. Because I don't think you'll know if I do, but...
Don't be a...
So, my friends.
What's it, on the...
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. This is Connie. You're very informative.
Call this, uh, call this meeting to order here. Call this meeting to order, the City of Utica Common Council. It's Wednesday, July 2nd, 7:00 PM. Uh, just to note, our council president's unable to attend tonight, so as President Pro Temp, I'll be conducting tonight's meeting. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ayello, Burmaster, Bitar, Carcone, Urban, Beatrice, Colasimo Testa, Lamedico, all present.
All right, please rise, uh, for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for deceased members of the council. All right, do we have a, uh, motion and a second to dispense, uh, with the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Motion? Thank you.
All right, next order of business, public hearings. Looks like we don't have any public hearings tonight. All right, and then we'll move to, uh, public comment. We have a few. All right, while our clerk's, uh, grabbing the sheet, each public speaker has, uh, three minutes, and we also have, uh, the rules up on the podium as well, and we'll move forward here in just a second. All right, our first, uh, public, uh, for public comment, our first speaker tonight is, uh, Francis Brown. All right, Mr. Brown, uh, good evening. The council has provided you with a copy of Section, uh, 3-2-44, uh, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule there in front of you?
I am.
Okay.
Do you know what I want to do this 4th of July? I'd like to celebrate the document that was supposed to free us all Americans from tyranny. Yet, I see tyrants have been become popular, become people with power. You had my landlord, Ivan Cortez, who's supposed to be a reverend, but beware wolves in sheep's clothing. He uses his power to deceive the weak. He lies, he cheats, like spray foaming, the corner of my building that had rot- rotted over two feet long and over a foot and a half foot high. This is the main support that keeps my building from falling in the next good storm. Or my leaking ceiling that codes only cited as painted, needed painted from peeling. Did I explain the issue during the inspection? Sure did. Was I ignored? Of course. Just like my persistent complaints of the nuisance tenant, Deborah Ismael, placed in my building by Mr. Cortez to harass me and attack my mental health by not allowing me to sleep at night during her drunken fighting with Antonio Franco, most of it could be classed as domestic violence. Tyrant, a person exceeding in power or control in a cruel and unusual way. Yup, check, Mr. Cortez makes the list. Helio Health is another tyrant. They placed me, they kicked me out of the program per stating I would protest in front of a supervisor's house if they did not get Mr. Cortez to make the repairs. They said it was a threat. Last I knew, I looked, I could protest anywhere in public as long as peacefully. I was booted for exercising my rights and refusing to relapse back to alcohol and be recycled back into their program. Their supervisor was also holding another position that would audit herself. Helio Health claimed I broke the rule by committing a crime. No charges were ever pressed against me, therefore denied due process of law. Why? Because the power of Johanna Williams held. Newsflash, Helio Health, I will not relapse, I will not be your puppet. How was I placed, uh, by Helio Health in such a rundown place? How was the HUD inspection forepassed with so many code violations, including leaking ceiling, a hole four foot by four foot behind the stove, a wobbly ceiling fan, non-working plugs, and a whole lot more?
Thirty seconds, uh, here.
I saw yesterday in the headlines that Rome is enforcing the public nuisance abatement. How about restoring peace and order back to my residential neighborhood before the nuisance Deborah Ismael moved in? Even with the numerous complaints prior to the establishing thirty days to my landlord, Ivan Cortez. Therefore, Mr. Cortez is allowing the nuisance to continue to try to force me out and give up and leave. This is an unlawful eviction tactic. This is now a criminal matter, not civil, and Utica Police Department is failing to enforce the laws of New York State. So, as you are joining your festivals, remember that the people still fighting terror need today. I will not lie down and give up all the sacrifices made in order to protect this great nation and freedoms established in the United States and the New York State constitutions.
Thank you.
All men are created equal, that are ensured by their Creator with certain unalienated rights, that among those are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, Declaration of Independence, paragraph two. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, our, uh, next speaker tonight, Francesco Ficoli. All right, uh, you've been, uh, been provided here, uh, with a copy of Section 3-2-44, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Sure I am.
All right, please state your name.
Francesco Ficoli.
You can go ahead.
So, uh, I'm here today on, uh, behalf of our children today playing organized baseball. Um, so I put together a little presentation to, uh, just to have the council review on why you should be ashamed of yourself. So, let's begin with the dumb spending. Now, let me preface this also, as in this is also hearsay. I have to confirm all these, uh, what I believe to be facts. Valley View projected to cost $2 million. Actual cost, $8 million. Who approved the overspending? Why is it still not open? $4 million for an ice skating rink that was open two to three hours a day. $20,000 just for the Zamboni upkeep. $3 million for a skate park, $2 million to the Ovalston, estimated, um, $1 million of the city's dollars to Harbor Point. We've paid for water slides that God knows where those are, and we have dog parks that are essentially equivalent to the same amount of material it would take to build these kids a new baseball field. Um, moving on to the Parks Department, we have nine total employees, which is, to maintain the city, absolutely insane. We keep expanding though. Let's keep building stuff throughout the city for these nine employees to upkeep on their own with no help. Um, just the other day, I seen a friend of mine on Facebook post that Harbor Point was loaded with, uh, geese droppings. Somehow the manpower was found to clean that. Can't find manpower to, uh, mow a Little League field though. Um, the skate park that they spent millions of dollars on the other day was vandalized. Promptly found the manpower for that cleanup. So now the city has a new football and soccer field, new skate parks, new playgrounds, new splash pads with constant jet streams of water. Um, and a harbor that's probably going to get very little use with the exception of what fishermen might be in this city, myself included. So, what money is being put into our kids' organized baseball? I can tell you right now, from the city, it is zero. And, uh, so are we expanding for the council's clout? So down the road, you can say, "You guys did that," and get your picture taken in front of whatever project's done? Or, um, do I need to continue to drag the administration through the mud until we can get these kids a proper baseball field? From what I was told the other day while we were, I was coaching a game, I asked the other coach who was, uh, playing on our Little League field, didn't look like somebody from our area. I guess it was, uh, Whitesboro and someone else who were playing, but...
Thirty seconds here.
So, according to him, Utica is a host field. So you guys want people from other areas coming to our city to look at these disgusting, dilapidated, rundown fields? And honestly, this has nothing to do with you guys, but I think Utica Little League should change their name to MV Little League because the city is not giving the kids any help, so why should the kids represent the city? So if you flip to the back pages, just a few pictures, and now this is only the North Utica Field, I didn't have time to get to the West Utica Field. Tons of safety concerns here that the city definitely should be addressing. Um, you've got, uh, crumbling fences, buildings that are falling apart, concessions that are falling apart. The yellow safety tubing around the top of the chain link fence, that is also falling apart. Clearly in one of the pictures, you can see the holes where the chain link is poking through. So God forbid a kid runs to try and catch a fly ball or something, looking at the ball, oh, the next thing you know, now they're on their way to the hospital for stitches. Another one, top left corner of that very same page, you've got a hole sticking straight out of that fence. Somebody's going to get impaled on that.
Ficoli, we'll have to wrap up here. Did you provide copies to, uh, around?
Yeah, everybody has copies, um, just random, it's just a bunch of, uh, garbage, dilapidated fencing, um, overgrown fields. A kid's going to take a, uh, uh, one hot ball off one of these weeds into the teeth, no doubt about it. Um, I do get it, some field maintenance is the parent's responsibility, but the city should also step in and help these kids. You want them to grow and prosper and be a part of a team in organized, uh, sports, well, you gotta give them the facilities to do so. So, that's my part. Um, also, last page, there's a picture of the geese shit and the cleanup, and all that other stuff.
We'll have to wrap it up here, all right.
All right.
Uh, we have one more, uh...
Here's some copies for the rest of the people, in case they want to take a look at the mess.
For, uh, public comment here, Boden Rubarski. All right, uh, Common Council has provided a copy of Section 3-2-44, uh, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
All right, please state your name.
Boden Rubarski.
All right, you can go ahead and begin.
Pardon?
You can go ahead and begin.
Hi, uh, I live in North Utica, and, uh, I'm one of the facilitators of the North Utica Neighbor Association. A couple of years ago, we took over for, uh, Ronald Lucille Vincent. We did a fantastic job running the association, and, uh, we just want to build up on it. And, uh, one of the problems we have is getting people to attend. And, uh, we, we post, uh, a public service announcement in a, a Daily Sentinel, we put flyers out, uh, we use social media as much as possible, uh, but it still is not enough. And what we're trying to do, we're wondering if possibly, between, there's five associations in, in Utica, and if possibly we could use the city's website on their homepage. And I checked on there, and on the homepage of the city, uh, the city's homepage is, uh, you have, right on the top of the page, you have a, a latest news section, a meeting event section, and a connect with Utica section. And then down below, uh, you have a links, a community and activity, and follow the City of Utica. And all, uh, all, uh, well, I shouldn't say, I can't speak for all of them, but I know West, South, and North Utica, and, uh, and the Midtown, which is Corn Hill, have a Facebook page. So, you know, we could provide you a, a link to it, which hopefully will maybe increase the attendance to our, uh, to our meetings. It's a great value to the city. Uh, for a lot of the citizens, it's the only access they have to city government, to city officials. Uh, we get a lot of city officials come to our meetings to speak. A lot of the city officials that are sitting here have spoken at our meetings. And, uh, it's the only access a lot of the people in, you know, like in North Utica or any parts of the city have access to the city officials. Uh, I get constant calls and emails thanking me for, for putting out information. Almost daily, we get emails from, uh, from the mayor's secretary to, for, uh, to send out press releases. Uh, I myself have, through the North Utica Association, and probably have a list of about a hundred email addresses that we send out. On top of the, uh, people that don't have emails, we, we call the people up and let them know about information like what's going on with the Harbor Point tomorrow, with the concert, with the parade coming up, and the party in the park on Friday. So, uh, otherwise, people, how would people know about it? You know, it's, there's, there's no other way for them to find out. And if, if we could possibly have a link somehow on the city's webpage, uh, you know, it would be a great service to the, to the people in the City of Utica.
About thirty seconds here.
All right, I'm, that's it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, those are, uh, it's the full list, uh, for individuals for public comment tonight. Uh, next on the agenda, Common Council guest speakers. We do not have any guest speakers tonight. Uh, we have report of city officers. We could start with our, uh, fire chief, Scott Ingersoll.
Nothing to, uh, nothing to report tonight.
Our planning department, Chris Lawrence.
I, um, we're just in the process of applying for several grants through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application at this point.
Uh, URA Commissioner Brian Thomas.
Nothing to report.
All right, uh, Utica Police Department, we have Captain Brian Banzner here tonight.
Everybody have a safe and happy 4th of July, and we'll be out there in Cold Forest for the 4th, and Boiler Maker coming up.
Uh, our DPW Commissioner, Mark Sokolowski.
Yeah, I just want to thank all my employees in, uh, DPW and Parks on the storm on July 22nd, working endlessly from that Sunday morning to really still right now. And we had over, well over a hundred and sixty loads and, uh, ten-wheelers of tree debris, and we are still out there going, working on the parade route and working on the Boiler Maker route, so. You see my guys out there go, and I appreciate all the, the council too that reached out, asked us if we needed something, water, lunch, everything like that. So I appreciate that as well, and they're just working hard out there.
We have our Code Commissioner, Marcus Phillips.
Just two things. Um, one is 4th of July, um, I don't think, um, it's illegal for people to set off fireworks in New York State. There's always accidents, and, um, I don't, I don't think people should be doing that, but we, we find fire, fireworks every year all over our streets and in our sewers, and it's the week before, um, the Boiler Maker Road Race. So if that's what you did or do, then please pick them up, because the mess makes it even worse. So, that's one thing. And the second thing is just, um, along the Boiler Maker Route, we're going to be abating and billing people quickly. Um, so if you have a house or a business along the route, um, you're not going to get as much leeway or notification as you normally do, and, and Parks works together with us, and, and, and you can find something on your bill. So take pride, um, in the city and, and, and make sure that the area along the route will be...
Thank you. And, uh, finally here, we have our Deputy Engineer, Nick Brynbecker.
Yeah, I just want to say, the lists are out. I would encourage all the council officers to continue to send in, um, repairs as you see them or complaints that come in through your constituents. A repairs list is a ongoing and moving thing. It's, uh, it's no standard way. However, with, with, that being said, repairs are starting on Monday. Uh, we're addressing all sinkholes first, um, some of which council has provided me with locations. Some we've been building over the last year from complaints, uh, and working with DPW. Past that, I just wish, uh, everybody to be safe around all the people that are paving and, and everybody that's working in the streets, because, uh, you know, it's dangerous out there. That's it.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, do we have a cash report tonight? Uh, and then, uh, now we have petitions, remonstrations, and appeals. Uh, we'll start with First District Councilmember Katie Ayello.
Thank you, President Pro Temp. I'm all set tonight.
Uh, Second District Councilmember and Majority Leader, Robert Burmaster.
Thank you. I, I just want to compliment the, the departments. I've, I've called, they've come, they've conquered. My people call me up, they're, they're very satisfied with the response, with the work. You know, we've got some great people working in the city, and, and I want to thank them for, for doing, doing the right thing for, for the people. And, and Mark, you're a big part of that, and I want to thank you and your people. And, uh, enjoy your summer, be safe, and that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll piggyback off of what, uh, Councilmember Burmaster said, uh, with the DPW after this big storm, uh, still cleaning up debris in, in areas. And still the DPW Commissioner today having time to come and meet with me on O'Nyda Street to see that graffiti's covered up and painted, so, so always appreciate it. Uh, Fourth, uh, Fourth District Councilmember Frank Carcone.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mark, uh, they did an unbelievable job. I had somebody call me with a complaint. I was driving by, went to the complaint before I could even call Mark, or somebody there already cleaning it up. And they did a wonderful job after the long winter they had. Now they're having a tough summer already. And I also like to, uh, congratulate my nephew, Tom Carcone, for retiring from the fire department. We had a nice little gathering down Engine One, and I can't even count how many of his fellow firemen told me they were going to miss him as their union rep. And, uh, they wish he wasn't going. Wish him the best of luck. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Fifth District Councilmember Venice Urban.
Um, thank you. Um, the Love and End Series will begin in, um, again on, um, this Monday, July 7th, and it's going to run through, um, August 29th, and that's at Copernick Park. Up on Genesee Street, close to Nye Square. I think she's going to make an announcement, so I'm not going to say anything, but, um, it is going to be starting, there's music, a lot of people out, so, if you get a chance, come out. And also I want to thank Mark for putting up with the people that we've been sending them over that are, um, probation. Cause I'm hearing that they're doing a pretty good job, but they're, they're a tough group, and I heard they've been showing up on time and doing a good job, so. He's happy, I'm happy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Sixth District Councilmember Joseph Beatrice.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Bitar. Um, I'm not going to say what a great job Mark does, because I always do all the time, and he does do a good job with his team, so, um, thank you for everything you do. Just one, the only answer I got to say is, uh, guest speaker, North Utica Meeting, it'll be, I got to announce two of them, because we're off for the summer. 7:28, uh, will be the next meeting. Guest speaker will be, uh, Laura Cohen, Director of Community Development for the City, and Calvin Brown, Rural Preservation Program Manager for Mohawk Valley Community Action. And then the August meeting, we're going to be, um, well, our meeting will be after, um, it'll be August 25th. And the Deerfield Town Supervisor Greg Sacco will be the guest speaker. So if anybody's got questions about projects coming up in Deerfield that border North Utica, please do that. And everybody have great summer, and see you later.
All right, thanks. Uh, next we have Councilmember-at-Large Samantha Colasimo Testa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, a, a couple of things. When I go through these photos, there are a lot of things that, um, the league itself has fixed. Um, we did have, um, turf that we got from Utica College, um, that we were able to utilize for batting cages. Um, there was a different, there was different dimensions with the turf that we weren't able to use all of the turf, um, so we tried to get that removed from the field as quickly as possible. Uh, we did get paint donated from Lowe's that just came in, so they, we, we actually painted out dugouts and did what we can. We're trying to still do some work on the actual, um, clubhouses, but again, you know, not only are we volunteers, we're also parents that coach our kids, and, um, it's tough when you're still working full-time to try and get all these things done. And I know the Parks Department, anytime we called while it was mowing, but a lot of the parents have to help out too. Um, some of us are running different projects when one of the major things that we, we should take care of, that youth, youth play a lot in the city, and our numbers have grown, is, is the perks. And we unfortunately did not get anything from that. So that, that was a big disappointment. Again, we got the 4th of July coming up, um, hopefully we can enjoy ourselves this year with it. Everybody be on their best behavior, that's all you can ask, um, because a lot of things get ruined inside the City of Utica, um, because people don't want to maintain responsibility or, or take pride in, in their city. And it's a, it's a big shame, because the, the Parks Department and DPW and codes and police and fire have to clean up the mess. And if everybody just took pride, the city would be a lot better, and we could obviously utilize our resources to other things. I just want to wish my All-Star team a good luck. Uh, we have our game on Saturday, and, uh, we've done pretty well so far, so knock on wood, we continue that. Um, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, finally, we have Councilmember-at-Large Jack Medico.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, very short here, just, uh, DPW did a great job cleaning up. Uh, thank you, Mark, and please tell your people that, uh, they did a hell of a job. I'm a little concerned about the fireworks coming on the 4th of July. I've had a couple of people in my neighborhood, uh, they're concerned that they have dogs, and their dogs are, you know, when, when you light the fireworks, the dogs get all nervous and everything. Uh, you know, try, try to be careful with the fireworks and, uh, and let's, yeah, let's, you know, come nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, let's, let's try to stop the fireworks after that. You know, if you have them, shoot them off. Um, but be really careful, we don't want any emergencies. Nobody losing their hands or their fingers. And, uh, other than that, I hope you, please come to the 4th of July Parade. And are we having fireworks this year? Is, when, when are they going to be at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
9:30 at Proctor Park.
Nine thirty?
Six o'clock, the fireworks start, though, don't it, Proctor Park?
Friday.
All right, so I hope everybody enjoys that. And, uh, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, next we'll move on to the legislation discussed at the pre-meeting caucus. Well, it looks like we have about sixteen pieces tonight. Uh, we'll start with Resolution Number One, Resolution Approving Intermunicipal Agreement with the Village of Waterville for Demolition Services. I have a motion introduced.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas it is in the interest of the taxpayers and residents of the City of Utica and the Village of Waterville to share resources in the undertaking of public works and other municipal improvement projects and services. And whereas the Village of Waterville is the owner of several buildings that require demolition located in the Village of Waterville, New York, and whereas the City of Utica possesses both heavy equipment and personnel needed to assist and facilitate the Village of Waterville and with the demolitions, be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby authorizes and approves the agreement in substantially the same form attached here too. Be it further resolved, that the Mayor of the City of Utica is authorized to execute this agreement and other documents necessary to effectuate the intents of this resolution. Votes? And I'll be voting yes on this.
Eight yeas adopted.
We have a, uh, up and down, I apologize, we have an up and down button here, I just want to note, it, it's not functioning, so I'll be announcing my votes, uh, verbally here. All right, so, uh, proposed Resolution Number Two, uh, we have a motion to commit this one. Second.
We, we need to make an amendment on that as well.
The, uh, one, two, the dirt from the bottom, where it says be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Utica that the three-lane path from Parkway East to Wellsport Road along Culver Avenue known as the, currently it says the Thomas R. Proctor NJ ROTC. Uh, it should say the Naval NJ ROTC.
Okay, so right now we have a, a motion to commit. Do we want to move to amend and then commit, or you want to commit it? All right, second the amendment. Uh, we'll have to vote on the amendment here. Vote yes on the amendment.
Eight yeas to amend.
Okay, now, uh, motion to commit. Second?
Second.
All right, committed.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Proposed ordinance number three, ordinance authorizing sale and/or disposal of surplus city equipment. Do I have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Ordained pursuant to Section 7.007 of the Utica City Charter, the Mayor or has authorized... authorized representative is hereby authorized to sell the city-owned personal property described below. Such property shall be offered for sale after public advertisement to the highest responsible bidder, or in whatever manner the Mayor or his authorized representative deems most appropriate. Further ordained, if in the opinion of the Mayor or his authorized representative, the condition of the property is such that offering for sale at public auction would be futile, then the Mayor or his authorized representative is authorized of the equipment in whatever manner he or she deems advisable in the best interest of the city, including sale as salvage or disposal as solid waste or trade-in for other equipment. In such event, the city officers shall submit the details of any proposed disposition to the Board of Estimate and Apportionment for approval prior to such disposition, and it is further ordained, in the event that no bids are received for any of such property, or that the Board of Estimate and Apportionment determines that any such bids are not in the best interest of the city, the Board of E&amp;A is hereby authorized to dispose of any property in any matter that it deems to be in the best interest of the city, and to make such disposition part of the public record of the proceedings of the Board and E&amp;A. Further ordained, any such sale or disposition is subject to the approval of the Board and E&amp;A. Further ordained, the property to be sold and/or disposed is described as follows. I believe this has been uploaded to the city website, so I won't read it in. Votes, please? Vote yes as well on this.
Eight yeas adopted.
Proposed Resolution Number Four, Resolution to Approve and Endorse Flavored Layers LLC 2025 New York Main Street Application. Do I have a motion introduced? We have a motion, second?
Thank you.
All right. Whereas applications for the New York Main Street NYMS program were made available through the State of New York and administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal under the direction of the Housing Trust Fund Corporation, and whereas the NYMS Fund program was created to provide resources to assist New York's communities with Main Street and downtown revitalization efforts through investments and projects that provide economic development and housing opportunities in downtown mixed-use commercial districts, and whereas Flavored Layers LLC is eligible to submit an application for a single-site standalone shovel-ready renovation project, and whereas Flavored Layers LLC is proposing to submit an application for funding to assist in rehabilitation of their building at 1011 State Street, and whereas Flavored Layers LLC is requesting up to $500,000 in funding from NYMS with the required 25% match being provided by the organization, and whereas as a formal resolution supporting Flavored Layers LLC Downtown Stabilization Project is required for the proposed NYMS application, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by Flavored Layers LLC under the 2025 New York Main Street Program for Rehabilitation of 1011 State Street. Votes, please?
Can we just get a copy of, do they have like an actual site plan of this proposal?
Brian?
Yes.
Can you submit it? Can you just, can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Please.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Proposed Resolution Number Five, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State BOA Pre-Development Application for the Barnes Ave Neighborhood. Do I have a motion introduced?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Whereas the Department of State is soliciting applications through the New York Consolidated Funding Application, CFA, from eligible municipalities, community-based not-for-profit organizations, and NYC community boards for brownfield opportunity area, strike that, for brownfield opportunity area program, and whereas funds are available for projects that establish or implement strategies for community redevelopment of areas affected by historical disinvestment, vacant and blighted properties, and the presence of potential, the potential presence of brownfields, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application to fund a neighborhood plan, community engagement, and design and construction documents for the Barnes Ave Neighborhood bounded by Platt Street to the west, Skylar Street to the east, Ariskene Street West to the south, and the CSX rail line to the north, and whereas the city is requesting up to $400,000 in funding from the Department of State with the required 10% match being provided for by a New York State DOT grant, CSX, for the Barnes Ave Bridge demolition, and whereas a formal resolution supporting the application is required by the Department of State, now therefore be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request for the city under the Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area Program for Design and Construction Documents for the Barnes Ave Neighborhood. Votes, please? Are you voting yes on this?
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Proposed Resolution Number Six, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State BOA Pre-Development Application for Broad Street. Do I have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas the Department of State is soliciting applications through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application, CFA, from eligible municipalities, community-based not-for-profit organizations, and NYC community boards for brownfield opportunity area program, whereas funds are available for projects that establish or implement strategies for community redevelopment of areas affected by historical disinvestment, vacant and blighted properties, and the presence of potential, or the potential presence of brownfields, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application for design and construction documents and renderings for infill development and adaptive use, streetscape improvements, pedestrian improvements, and whereas the city is requesting up to $400,000 in funding from the Department of State with the required 10% match being provided by allocated downtown revitalization initiative, DRI funds, and whereas a formal resolution supporting the application is required by the Department of State, now therefore be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of Utica does hereby approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area for Design and Construction Documents and Renderings for Infill Development and Adaptive Reuse Streetscape Improvements and Pedestrian Improvements. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Resolution Number Seven, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State BOA Pre-Development Application for the former Howard Johnson site and Leland Ave. Motion introduced?
Motion?
Second?
Thank you.
Whereas the Department of State is soliciting applications through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application, CFA, from eligible municipalities, community-based not-for-profit organizations, and NYC community boards for brownfield opportunity area program, and whereas funds are available for projects that establish or implement strategies for community redevelopment of areas affected by historical disinvestment, vacant and blighted properties, and the presence or potential presence of brownfields, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application, an application to assess vacant properties for site assembly at Leland Ave and the former Howard Johnson, develop a road access plan for the former Howard Johnson through Leland Ave and procure design, construction, and site redevelopment documents for a road network off Leland Ave, and whereas the city is requesting up to $400,000 in funding from the Department of State with the required 10% match being provided by the New York State Throughway Authority and in-kind staff time, and whereas a former, a formal resolution supporting the application is required by the Department of State, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area Program for Site Development, Design, and Construction Documents for the former Howard Johnson and Leland Ave. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
I appreciate these submissions.
If you really just want to read the resolution, and then the, just whereas for the matching amount, and then therefore be it resolved, that's fine.
So, so I just want to make sure. So this looks like in the eight, let's just clarify this, in eight, nine, 10.
Eleven.
Eleven looks different. So eight, nine, and 10 here. I'm going to skip the first whereas, second whereas.
So just read the fourth.
And move on to the fourth and on. All right?
Yep. Well, I was, but I was enjoying it. You've got to work to be the council president sometimes, you know what I mean?
I just got a text about this, too, saying it's wonderful to listen to someone like this.
All right, so let's, let's move on to Proposed Resolution Number Eight.
I was enjoying it.
We have a resolution to approve and endorse the city department, City's Department of State BOA Pre-Development Application for the Nexus Corridor. Do we have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second. All right. So, third whereas clause, the city is proposing to submit an application to fund remedial investigations, environmental site assessments, and remedial analysis work plan for sites found in Bag Square West, specifically the blocks bounded by Broadway, Whitesboro Street, Ariskene Street West, and Hotel Street, and whereas the city is requesting up to $400,000 in funding from the Department of State with the required 10% match being provided by the current property, current private property owners. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area for Remedial Investigations of Sites in the Nexus Corridor. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Proposed Resolution Number Nine, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State BOA Pre-Development Application for the former melee manufacturing site in the Ariskene Street West corridor. Do we have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second. Whereas the city is proposing to submit an application to prepare brownfield cleanup program documents for the New York State DEC, as well as a traffic study, master streetscaping plan, and design standards for Ariskene Street West, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica does hereby approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area Program for BCP documents for the former melee manufacturing site and design and construction documents for public realm improvements to Ariskene Street West. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Proposed Resolution Number Ten, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State Smart Growth Application for an updated citywide master plan. Do we have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Whereas the Department of State is soliciting applications through the New York State Consolidated Funding, CFA, under the Environmental Protection Fund Smart Growth Community Planning Program for eligible towns, villages, cities, counties, or regional planning entities, and whereas funds are available for projects, fund a new or updated comprehensive plan for an entire town, village, or city that integrates smart growth principles, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application for funding to assist in the creation of a new master plan, and whereas the city is requesting up to $432,635 in funding from the Department of State with the required 10%, the 10% match being provided for by in-kind staff through the Department of Urban and Economic Development, whereas a formal resolution supporting the application is required by the Department of State, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Smart Growth Program for a new master plan. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Next, we have Proposed Resolution Number Eleven, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Regional Council Capital Funds Application for Bag Square West. Do we have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second. Whereas Empire State Development has $60 million of capital grant funding available for the state's Regional Economic Development Council Initiative, which helps drive regional and local economic development across New York State, and whereas funds are available for capital-based economic development projects intended to create or retain jobs, prevent, reduce, or eliminate unemployment or underemployment, increase business or economic activity in a community or region, and/or expand, construct, restore, or renovate New York State tourism destinations and attractions, and whereas applications may be made for economic growth investment projects that foster economic growth through improvements to facilities in distressed areas, census tracts, commercial revitalization activities in central business districts and commercial strips, and strategic redevelopment projects, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application for funding to reestablish and extend Water Street, reconnect the Hotel Street grid, and make green infrastructure improvements along Berchard Lane, and whereas the city is requesting up to $2 million in funding from the Empire State Development with the required 80% match being provided through transportation assistance funding, TAP, from New York State Department of Transportation, and whereas there is a 10% equity match against the total project cost, which will be provided by a future CDBG allocation to demolish the building in the anticipated right-of-way of the Hotel Street extension, and a designation from the fiscal year 2627 paving budget, whereas a formal resolution supporting the application is required by ESD, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under ESD's Regional Council of Capital Funds to reestablish Water Street, realign Hotel Street, and add green infrastructure to Berchard Lane. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
All right. Proposed Resolution Number Twelve, Authorizing Sale of Beer and Wine.
Motion.
The Golf Course, Valley View is a golf course, but it is under the, the National Golf Course, the City of Utica, nation's, on the blue, really, truly, I can't understand. Well, they're not here, so I think we're going to have to sponsor it.
Well, they're not here, and I don't think we could put their name in without them saying we can.
Well, the Valley View Golf Course is just the name of the place. It has no authority.
Right, but it's actually under the person that's holding the liquor license, the one that applied for it. So it's under an LLC.
Do with it whatever you wish to.
Okay, so then what was the LLC?
The LLC.
If you want to pull the file, I'll make an amendment contingent that it's amended to say the LLC, because it's actually not Valley View Golf Course.
You want to waive the rules of order and follow up with this last? Keep moving and circle back to this.
Yeah, because that's all she's just got to pull it off, and then she's got to turn all her computers back on. I mean, I was okay, I was okay for it to be contingent.
Want to move on to 13 while we, okay.
And only do the last three.
All right, so while we're waiting, Proposed Resolution Number 13, Resolution to Approve and Endorse the City's Department of State and Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Application for Harbor Point. Do we have a motion introduced?
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
Whereas the Department of State's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program funded under Title 11 of the Environmental Protection Fund provides matching grants on a competitive basis to eligible villages, towns, and cities located along New York's coasts or designated inland waterways, and whereas funds are available for planning, design, and construction projects to revitalize, revitalize communities and waterfronts, and whereas the city is proposing to submit an application for flood resiliency improvements at the historic 1933 building and a green event lot with permeable pavement and green infrastructure additions, and whereas the city is requesting up to $1.5 million in funding from the Department of State with the required 25% match being provided for by the Utica Sewer Fund, and whereas a formal resolution supporting the application is required by the Department of State, now therefore be it resolved, that the Common Council of the City of Utica hereby does approve and endorse the submission of a grant request by the city under the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program for Harbor Point. Votes, please? Are you voting yes on this as well? We could wait for our clerk at this one.
Judge, their application and everything's already in, it's approved, so it's
Judge, their application and everything's already in, it's approved. So it's not like the, the application in the clerk's office is not, we just have to make these contingent. If we amend it to say what the application says, it's already there. That's why it's under one, that's why it's under one.
Well, all of these tournaments are by year, okay.
So we're talking about 12 now, let's, let's hang tight on 13.
Right, it's the one person that holds the liquor license for it.
No, I get it, let, let's hang tight on 13 until our clerk comes back.
Yes, it's, it's one person, that's why it's all on one, it's all the same person. Right, but that's what I'm saying, it's all under one person. It's not separate, it's not separate people that are sponsoring the tournament. No, but it's the grant, it's, it's.
Is anyone opposed to me calling the vote on 13? Eight, eight yeas adopted. Anyone opposed?
I understand, I understand what the judge is saying. All right, that's fine, Moes, it's not, we, I already. It's all the same person holding the one liquor. It's not the City of Utica sponsoring it, it's the one person that holds the title for Valley View.
All right, so let's, let's do, let's do this, we just voted on 13, eight yeas adopted, let's go back to 12 now.
You voted no?
So we'll move back to 12, okay? Which is authorizing sale of beer and wine to Valley View Golf Course. Do we have a motion introduce?
Motion.
Second. All right, whereas the sale of alcoholic beverages and possession.
Uh, ma, the motion to amend August to say September 20th.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to amend the last date. We have a second on the amendment, so we'll have to vote on the amendment. All right, I'll vote yes on the amendment.
I need one more.
Eight yeas amended.
All right. Whereas the sale of alcoholic beverages and possession of an open container containing alcoholic beverages is prohibited in the city, uh, in Utica City Streets, sidewalks, playgrounds, parks, and right-of-way by ordinance of the common council, except in certain circumstances where permission is granted by the common council. Be it resolved that permission to sell beer and wine and exemption from the provisions of Section 2-15-43 regarding open containers of alcoholic beverages is granted to Valley View Golf Course. Name of the event, 2025 golf tournaments, multiple dates of the event. We have, the times are all the same, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Dates of the events, Friday, July 18th, Monday, July 21st, Saturday, July 26th, Saturday, August 2nd, Sunday, August 3rd, Saturday, August 16th, Friday, August 22nd, Friday, September 5th, and as amended, Saturday, September 20th. Location, 620 Memorial Parkway. Grab your votes, please.
Eight yeas adopted.
All right, next we are moving ahead to proposed resolution number 14, authorizing sale of beer and wine to Greater Utica Chamber of Commerce. Do we have a motion introduce?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
This is to grant a exemption to consume beer and wine. Name of the sponsor, Greater Utica Chamber of Commerce, Five Points Pub. Name of the event is Finale Happy Hour. Date of the event is Thursday, July 24th, 2025, from 3:00 to 9:00. Location is 600 Block of Huntington Ave, dash, Five Points Pub, 623 Columbia Street, Utica, New York. Votes please.
Eight yeas adopted.
All right, proposed resolution number 15, authorizing sale of beer and wine to the Dinghy Bar Boiler Maker Celebration. Uh, first, do we have a motion to waive the, uh, Thursday rule?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, Thursday rule is waived, uh, now can we have a motion introduce?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, name of the sponsor, Dinghy Bar Boiler Maker Celebration. The event is the Boiler Maker Celebration, Sunday, July 13th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. 728 Plant Street, Utica, New York, 13502. Votes please.
Eight yeas adopted.
All right, uh, finally here we have proposed resolution number 16, housing blanket.
Motion to introduce. Thank you.
Whereas the state of New York has made $100 million in funding available through the Pro Housing Supply Funds Program to cities, towns, and villages throughout the state to assist communities in, uh, addressing infrastructure issues that hamper the redevelopment, the development of much-needed housing. Whereas the funding available through this program ranges from a minimum of $2.5 million to a maximum of $10 million and requires an equal match. Each applicant is limited to a maximum of two awards in this current funding round. Applications are being made available through the state's Consolidated Funding Application Process, which are due by 4:00 PM on Thursday, July 31st, 2025. Whereas the program application requires a letter of support from the legislative body of the quote lowest level of municipal, uh, government wherein the project resides, end quote. Now therefore be it resolved that in the interest of encouraging development of the infrastructure necessary to support housing of all types throughout the city, common council pres, uh, common council hereby authorizes the council president, Rocco Geruzzi, to sign any and all letters of support on behalf of eligible projects that are in compliance with existing zoning. Votes please.
Eight yeas adopted.
And Mr. President, we have a, we have to pull out, uh, resolutions seven and 11 from committee.
From committee, okay.
So motion to pull resolution seven.
So, resolution 11 first?
Whichever, seven and 11 we have to do. I said seven.
All right, so, resolution number seven, authorizing beer and wine.
Yep.
From June 18th, 2025.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Pull that from committee.
He already said that they're good to go.
I, I confirm that they're good to go.
Oh, okay.
No objection.
All right, so this is authorizing sale of beer and wine to Baby Wayne Movements. Motion introduce?
Motion.
Second. Name of sponsor, Wayne Brown. The event is barbecue jerk event. The dates are Saturday, July 26th, Saturday, August 30th, and Saturday, September 27th. The location is the Franklin Square Alley at 55 Hotel Street in Utica. Votes please.
Eight yeas adopted.
And a motion to pull resolution 11.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, this is authorizing beer and wine, and date committed is May 21st, 2025. Authorizing sale of beer and wine to Soul, uh, One, One Two Restaurant. Motion introduce? Motion introduce?
Motion.
Second. Soul, Soul One One Two Restaurant, name of event, Luau Cookout. Date of events, Saturday, July 19th, 5:00 to 10:00 PM, Saturday, August 16th, 5:00 to 10:00 PM. Liberty Bell Park, 150 HNSC Street, Utica. Votes please.
Eight yeas adopted. Second? Thank you.
All right, it's motion, uh, we need to adjourn, thank you.